Regular city council meeting this Tuesday, September 2nd already. Thank you for joining us. We'll get started, we already did get started at five o'clock this afternoon. We had a work session. The topic was Washington Terrace Active Transportation Plan. Looks, uh, looks awesome. So, we're initiating that, getting together with some neighboring cities and trying to put together an active transportation plan. Super excited about that. Let's move on our agenda tonight. Item number two is a roll call. Amy, please.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Christianson.
Here.
Councilmembers Deschawn.
Here.
Councilmember Parkinson.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here. Okay, thank you very much, Amy. Item number three is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where we stand under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that Pledge of Allegiance. I really appreciate that. Just like to welcome all that are with us this evening in person and on, uh, online with us. And council, thank you. I so appreciate the attendance we've had. Everybody's, seems like they've been here for the last several months, a hundred percent participation in our meeting. So, thank you for, for making that effort to show up every other Tuesday night. Appreciate that very much. And constituents, your constituents, I'm sure appreciate that also. So, thank you very much for that. Uh, let's move to item number five, consent items. Five point one, approval of agenda this evening and August 19th, 2025 council meeting minutes. Agenda's good?
Yep.
Council meeting minutes. Any questions? Call them. Any, uh, anyone opposed to approving those? Seeing none, we'll approve those by general consent. Thank you very much. Item number six is our citizen comment periods. Would anybody like to come up? And, uh, have some, uh, show, have some citizen comments for us. I don't see anybody coming up right away. So, we'll move on to item number seven, new business. Item six point one, we have a presentation tonight, a code enforcement update. So, uh, Tom or we have Martin Nish with us tonight. So, whichever, who wants to start this off? Tom's got something in his hand there, so we're.
We were, I'm gonna try to make it so that, so that those watching online can see the presentation.
Okay.
So, I've moved the camera, actually, Martin, I've moved the camera off of you and it's over on the wall. So, you just stay right there and you'll be, you'll be good to go. Um, but we were talking, uh, a little while ago about the effort that Martin has been putting into code enforcement. This has got to be one of the most thankless jobs on planet Earth. Um, I think even the guys that, you know, all due respect, guys that are clean and sewer don't get thanked, thanked less than Martin. Um, it is an absolute continual, game of whack-a-mole. And, but Martin has been having some, some good success while we recognize that there's other areas in the city that we've been struggling. But, um, I, it's, it's great to be able to have staff come, uh, give some information to all of you and, and talk about some of the, some of the, the successes and the excellent work that Martin's been doing. He won't brag about him, but I will. And I know that all of you do. He does a beautiful job for us. Um, it is a tough job. And, um, and I appreciate Martin and all of his effort in, in working in code enforcement and helping people have a more enjoyable community environment to live. And it was ranked very, very high in our last, uh, citywide survey, survey of an area that really they wanted some effort, uh, put into. So, um, I'm gonna turn off those lights. I'm gonna open up that guy and we'll be good to go, Martin. So.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Thanks for joining us, Martin. Appreciate you. And, uh, I'd have to echo what Tom said. I've been, I've been looking at yards for 25 years. And, uh, honestly, I've never seen the improvement that, uh, that you've made in the last year, two years? How long have you been with it?
It's been just about two years.
About two years. So, there, there's always, always seemed to be improvement on properties that I've watched for a long, long time. And, uh, and again, Tom mentioned whack-a-mole. It seems like when you get that one property done, then a year later, you gotta go back and have another talk with them again. So, that's a little frustrating that they can't, without being, having a babysitter, they can't go out and do their own thing. You can't see the weeds are another two feet high again without you knocking on the door. So, it, it is a tough job, but Martin has a great personality for it and does a, does a great job for it. So, thank you, Martin. It's, it's great to work with you. So, you're on.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tom. That's very gracious of you to give me those accolades. But, um, really, the citizens of, a lot of citizens have really stepped up. And there's some that you'll see in some of the slides that I'll share with you that are really, I mean, they went right first class and, and took care of their place and made it look really good. That we would want the terraced to look.
Can you pull the mic closer to you, please?
You bet. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better. I'm just kinda watching your images here, so.
Okay. So, with that, let's get started. Um, so, this is kind of the referral breakdown. Tannen was gracious enough to me to create a, a couple of these, uh, maps. And these are how the referrals come. The majority of them obviously, um, come through me driving by. When I go out to do a, a check on a, a property, inevitably I'll see one or two on the street and I just can't ignore it. So, I'll go up and address it if they're there or else I'll come back and make a phone call and send letters if need be. But, most of them come to me through that. The other ones come through the webs, probably the next, and then phone calls and emails and voice messages and that, that type. So, those are typically the way we see those come through. This is the heat map of kind of those concentrated areas. The brighter the red there, there's the more concentrated on numbers of, uh, referrals that come from those areas. And these are the different types broken out with color codes on here. And most of those are landscaping maintenance. Yards with weeds or being dried out, those types of things that they need to be mowed down and taken care of. So, um, you can see, I don't think you can see that. Yeah, you can see them up there better actually than I can here. But landscaping, there's 127 of those so far this year. Um, the next on the list probably would be various parking violations. These are soft surface or parking in the street where they're not supposed to be or leaving a, a truck or a trailer or a business vehicle parked on the street where it's not supposed to be. And then after that, I think it would boil down to probably garbage, junk and debris that's kind of scattered around or things that are kind of unkept and unsightly around the lots, properties and stuff. And then, of course, you get the winter things and those, those types of things that come along too and other miscellaneous, um, types. I've talked about this before, but the first priority is always looking out for the safety of the city. If a sidewalk's lifted from a tree or something like that, or if there's an object or a vehicle or broken down parts setting out that could cause, or a freezer or something that's setting out there that could, that kid could get into, some attractive nuisance that we don't want somebody to get injured by. Put a lot of energy and focus on getting those cleaned up and taken care of. So, I go out and do the investigations and inquire in person if I can. If I can, I'll make phone calls and, uh, send letters to them. If we don't, then I send formal letters to them and hopefully they'll respond and, and take care of those. If not, then I'll send them on to the prosecutor and then on to court. But, in reality, the majority of them have been taken care of. And I'll get into that in one of these other slides. But I think, I think what I come up with is about 97% are taken care of without having to have prosecutor or court involvement on them. These are some of the flyers I created this year, just to kind of speed up the process. I figured as the more I could get out, the quicker I could get them out. Hopefully, some of those people would see the flyer and go, oh, yeah, I better get that taken care of. And for the most part, it's been pretty good. Probably, I don't know what the percentages are on the number of flyers that have been sent out and people taking care of them, but it's a pretty high percentage too. Most people look at it and go, yeah, I guess I probably should spiff it up or mow my yard or trim it or whatever. Um, the blue one's a parking one. And I've got different parking code listed on here. And for instance, I kind of highlighted one down there with an arrow on there that, that talks about what the code violation is. And then, um, what's expected on them. I did that for the, that and for the landscaping one. So, they have a time and the date when I visited, what the property address is, and then what's expected. And it has a piece of the code in there so they can read right what the code says, so they know what the expectations are. And I've got my phone number on there. So, if they wanna call, they can call. And I do get questions like, hey, you left a flyer on my house. I know I gotta get back to it and get it taken care of, or I'm out of town and we're, we're doing this or something else is going on. So, then I can make my notes and follow up on it. So, those have been, I think have been pretty handy to, to get around. And I think it's been helpful for law enforcement actually because the blue ones, sometimes cars parked on the streets, I'll put them on them and a lot of times they'll move them without me having to contact law enforcement to have them, get them motivated to, to move those vehicles.
Right. That's, that's what I wanted to clarify. If they're on the road, it gets turned over to the sheriff.
Yes.
Right? If it's, if it's on soft parking or on their grass or whatever, that is you.
Yeah.
But once they are on the road, that, you don't do those. You give a notice.
I, I give notices for the trailers and, and.
Oh, okay.
And trucks and stuff like that. But if they don't follow up on it, then I'll refer it over to law enforcement.
Okay.
For the sheriff to follow up with.
That's what I thought. Could you, I'd like to just have a copy of each one of those. Well, if you'd like to just have that, see what, in case your neighbor calls and says, hey, I got this note. And you'll say, oh, yeah, here's what it says on there. I'd like to just have a copy of that, just so I know what you're passing out.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. Cause most people.
If you just share that, if it's legible, that's okay for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just email it to all of us.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
If it's a PDF file, yeah.
Yeah, just something so we can kind of read that and be familiar with what you're putting out there. I think that'd be great for us to know. That's a great idea. Do you all get it?
Look at concern?
No, no, no.
Hold on.
There's a great one.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
So, this is kind of what happens. It looks like sometimes. I feel like that sometimes. It's like.
That's an animal control problem.
Am I missing something? It's kind of the whack-a-mole thing. It's like, hey, give me a break here. I'm trying to get this thing. But these are all the violations of different things that pop up. Anyway, this is kind of some of the efforts and the outcomes that have, have occurred so far this year. So, I've had 275 plus, give or take a few here, here and there, up to the third week of August. And some of them are finishing up and completing. Some new ones have come through. So, that's why it's plus or minus. And like I indicated earlier, the vast, uh, majority of them, the warning flyers, whether they're taped to a door or a window or whatever, people usually comply and, and take care of them. The ones that aren't are sent a, a formal notice of violation letters. And most of those have complied. Non-compliance, some of them have been sent to the prosecutor already. Last year, I think there was five that went to court. Three of them were given pretty substantial fines and, and taking care of their, their responsibility to be up to code. So, overall, vast majority are in a positive mode. So, non-compliers, if they haven't been sent to court, if they haven't complied, they will be. Um, I've actually sent two off today to the prosecutor to take a look at. With our urban chicken ordinance that was passed, um, we've only had a few people that have, um, applied for applications. There've been a few that had them and then they've either found out, there's two that found out they couldn't have them. So, they've got rid of the chickens and another asked if they have them, but they only had about 15 inches in the backyard. So, it would've been hard to do anything as far as creating a chicken coop for any kind of chickens. But, um, most people have been pretty good. When I've talked to them about it, they've, um, either got rid of the chickens or they've, um, filled out, uh, the application. I currently have one that's supposed to have it done today. I haven't seen it yet, but I'll check my emails later. And if not, then I'll follow up with them. And then in the works, we've got a new administrative procedure, procedure that creates kind of a, a little different process that might help the process. Um, our city attorney's been working on that. And that should be coming down the road here in the near future to be brought before the council. So, we'll discuss that when it arises. So, right now, there's 10 cases that are in process, meaning they're working on, if they're doing landscaping, maybe they've done part of that landscaping project. So, we've got plans set out with them, due dates, and they're in the process of taking care of those. I've given 17 extensions to people and 11 have complied. So, obviously, there's six that aren't in compliance. And some of those have been sent to court. And if they don't comply in the next week, uh, they'll be going to court too. So, we sent out 160 that are in compliance, um, uh, 30 formal letters is all I've had to send. Out of those 160, the other ones have complied without. Um, there's 149 cases open, probably less, cause I've completed some today, but there's more coming. So, that's just pretty close to where they're at. Uh, 11 formal letters have been sent on those open cases is all I've had to send out so far. So, if others come due here in the near future, then I'll send the other letters. And then if they don't comply from there, then I'll send them on to court. But the majority have complied. So, it's been pretty good. Right now, I've got one set for court from this year. There's a chicken, five approved, uh, one's not approved, three, um, chicken complaints. Two've got rid of them. One's pending, like I indicated. And, uh, when I calculate it, it's about 97% success without having to push them into court. It's been a lot of pushing, but they've complied. So, I'm pleased with that. So, here's some before and after. This was sitting on 300 West for six months probably. And they, they finally moved it up there in their, their driveway. This is a, a property it stopped at and looked like this at the beginning of the year. And, uh, within about, I think it was about three weeks, they had it greened up. So, I, I don't know what they did. If it was just water that did it, but it was, turned out really, looked really nice. Here's another one that, uh, was pretty, kind of hard to see there, but it's barren and dirt and really sparse. There wasn't hardly anything growing on it. They did keep it trimmed really nice, but there's nothing was there. And after talking with them, they decided they're gonna put some sod in. So, now it looks like that, which looks really nice. So. Here's another one. Uh, they, their grass looked kind of like that on the left and they tore it up and reseeded. And after about a month and a half, that's what it looks like. That's on down on 4400, I think. Here's one that, uh, was really dried out the same way. And they put the water on it. About three weeks later, it was looking like this. This one was overgrown with lots of weeds and the brush and stuff like that. And they went in and weeded and cleaned it out. Here's another one that's really dry. And so, they've started the process. They're gonna put some, they've, you can see they've added some room for driveway and they're gonna, um, reseed or plant. So, that should be done by next spring. This is, uh, some trees that were obstructing the view. If you drive down, you can see that that small tree was blocking off the view of the speed sign on, uh, ridge line. And now they cut the tree down and trimmed that tree back. And you can see it clearly. Here's one that was a zero scape that got full of big tall ragweed and stuff. And they cleaned it back out. So, it looks good again. This one they bricked off and planted and it looks good now too. You can't really tell from this first picture there on the left, but that's gravel that it was on. And they've now put it on cement. So, they're up to code. This one, uh, was, you can't really see. It doesn't look that bad on the, the left, but it was pretty weedy. And, um, the grass was probably, or grass and weeds probably about 10 inches in that picture. And then they, they re-sod it in this, in the process of trying to catch up with the hot weather and stuff. But it's a little dry. But, but they did sod and if they keep watering, it'll, it'll be looking good. This one, um, had some, uh, soft surface parking on it. After speaking with them, they decided they're gonna, uh, reseed. And so, they did. And now it looks really nice. Here's some junk. Can't show the after picture, cause it just shows the houses. They've moved it. This, this was quite a mess. Actually, here is it in after picture. Here's some more of it. And the picture down there on the right, cleaned it up. And, and the place looks great. It's just they had lots of stuff stacked up and kept bringing trailers and stuff. But I think we've got that one resolved now. Here's another one that had a little pile of junk. They cleaned it up. Here's another that had a whole bunch of, just an accumulation of a lot of things on the front yard and they cleaned it up. Still, a lot of stuff, but they like to lounge on the front yard. So, it looks much better than having tarps and all kinds of stuff out on the front yard. This is an obstruction. And they cleaned it off the sidewalk and cleared that out. Whoops. This one had a bunch of stuff in the carport and they cleaned it out. Here's some more junk that was under the carport. You can't see it in front of that silver vehicle. They've cleaned it out. So, that carport's cleaned out. And this one is on 300 West and it looks excellent. It was pretty sparse and dry. And they spent a lot of time over the last year. And this year, they, uh, got the sod out and got it put in there. And it looks really good now. So, we want it to look good like that so that, uh, the kids and the families and the neighborhoods look like this. And people can feel safe and, and enjoy, uh, uh, aesthetically pleasing community. So, that's the goal we want. And most citizens are complying. There's still a lot that are out there, as you've noticed, probably driving around the city or whatever. But I keep knocking on the doors and pushing on them. And hopefully, we'll get it straightened out to where they'll be consistent and take pride in keeping those lots up, upright and clean. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. That's, any questions or?
Any questions?
Yeah, well, no, wonderful, uh, presentation. Great work. Thank you. That's amazing. Uh, my question's more like general knowledge. Why do we prefer cement drive, not necessarily driveway, where they're keeping their, like, I don't know, RV in gravel over cement? Why is that preferable?
That would probably be a question for your predecessors. I think it, the code says either cement or, um, asphalt. My assumption is, cause there are some that have got gravel out there. And then there's weeds popping up, coming out from under a trailer or from the car. And it just looks unsightly. So, I'm assuming back, I don't know when it was passed, but back in the day, they probably passed it and said, let's have it be asphalt and cement. So, we don't have the, the weeds and stuff popping up.
That, that's exactly what it was 10, 15 years ago. Cause I've got pictures, probably if I can scroll back that far. But, yeah, everywhere there was a trailer parked on gravel, there was weeds right up to the bottom of the trailer and then starting to go out. And it was like, it was just a.
And I run into them every once in a while. There's some that are that well, run into it. They're parked on the gravel. It looks like they're just on grass or something and weeds. And, and come to find out, there was gravel there, whatever. But it's, and I, and I explain to them, it has to be on a solid surface, which is either cement or asphalt. Or they have to find another place to park it.
Makes sense. Thank you. Thank you again.
You bet.
Good work.
Jeff, a question I had is there's several properties that have dead trees, just completely dead, that, um, really kind of presented a safety hazard. You don't know when that tree's gonna fall over.
There are some. Some of them we've got cut down. Some we're working on, some right now. Um, I just looked at one today and they had the, um, Aspen Lawn Tree Service there. And they were putting it in the back. But when I come across them or, uh, I've been given that information, I usually address it with the people. Some of them are hard to address that, like in the backyard or whatever, it's hard for me to get back there unless someone wants to give me a picture. And then I can say, hey, this needs to come down. Cause the code does say dead trees, which, you know, so.
I know it's a couple of them on 500 West. Dead as can be. Still standing.
Yeah. And there may be some, uh, one of the things I run into is there's a lot of landlords and renters. A lot of times the renters will say, the landlord is responsible. The landlord will say that they're responsible. And I generally say, well, the landlord's your property. It's your responsibility. You need to take care of it with your renters. But, um, sometimes there's people that have moved out and we haven't got, we haven't got many of the contact or the bank's repossessed or whatever. So, there might be a few that are like that. But the majority of them were able to get somebody to get on them and get it taken care of.
Okay. So, you mentioned, you mentioned the landlords. Is it, you found it fairly easy to get a hold of landlords?
Um, most of them, I've, I've been able to get a hold of.
Okay, okay.
There's been a few that's been difficult to, to make contact with. But, um, most of them I can usually get a hold of. A couple of them are really good. They responded. I was kind of impressed. A couple of, I've asked and they responded within the day. The next day, it was taken care of. I was like, oh, wow. Good, good on them. Thanks for taking care of it.
Well, that's good to know. It used to be very difficult for, for previous officers that said, you know, out of state landlords and just.
Yeah, those ones are diff, more difficult.
We should have a record in there, you know? And I think we have better record keeping in with the gals at the front desk that, you know, of rental properties. And so.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I think that combined with your efforts, it's made a little bit easier to contact, uh, uh, owners' properties. Good.
Yep.
Good. It's a real concern. I don't know. Okay. I'm, I'm super excited.
Yeah, good work.
Great work.
Anybody else?
I'm curious about, do you follow the same process with commercial properties?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I've, I've been working with some commercial properties also.
Okay. Yeah, there's some vacant or.
Do you have any specific ones you'd like to?
Well, there's always the old A and M that is struggling to get.
Struggling, what can we do about that? Yeah.
But, but, but even like the vacant properties that are, are in use, they get overgrown. And, um, I know a lot of, there's a lot of concern to make sure that we're equally spreading.
Yes.
All of our resources to commercial and private property.
Yeah, even, yeah, even some big property owners that have property have been under scrutiny on it. And usually, they're pretty good on responding. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Not as, I mean, not as pretty always as should be. But, and, and I'm kind of referring to some on the south end that are kind of pastures. And I know that, uh, one of the landlords down there used to bail out all that and stuff. But, uh, with some pressure and a, energy getting that way, they usually get it taken care of and cleaned up. So, at least 20 or 30 feet back from the sidewalk, out in the middle of the field, they're still there. But, and I know there's gonna be some development on a couple of lots. So, that's, that's a good thing.
Fair.
And there's a couple of active businesses that, you know, weeds and stuff like that, I've contacted and had them, we whacked those down out of the sidewalks and stuff. So.
Great. Jeff? Yeah, I was gonna bring this up with the communication with staff. But this is the person that needs to hear it. So, uh, when you go out 5700 to, what do they call it, Adams Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
There's a billboard sign that used to have Dr. Carlton's face on it.
A white one on the mound, kind of?
Yeah. Can, can we get that removed?
I will make an effort.
There's nothing on it now.
Yeah, there's nothing on it. And it's kind of a sight.
Does he not, do they not on that still? I thought.
I don't know. I don't.
I'll, I'll follow up. I've talked to him before.
There's no sign that says for sale or rent on there anymore.
So, if we can just kind of get that removed to improve the sightline there.
Yeah.
On that, uh.
You bet.
We've had, we've had some, uh, citizens complain about that. Like, we talked about that. That intersection's kind of weird the way it's.
It is. That, that's.
Waited out. So, anything.
Cars come up, curving and kind of has curves. And so, it's hard to look both ways to see what's going on. So.
Sightlines, that would be great.
If you come from the east, every time, it's easy. It's great.
Yeah.
But sometimes you gotta go back the other way, right?
That's right.
So, it's kind of difficult. All right. Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Martin, thank you.
You bet.
Great job. Great job.
Thanks for your time.
Martin, thank you. We really appreciate the detail of your, of the, the work that you do and keeping your records so clean. Thank you for that. That is fantastic.
Keeping records, keeping, you know, because I've been through one of those courts. And, you know, the judge is pretty, pretty tough on, you know, detail and what, you know, what we've recorded over the last year or whatever. So, good job. Good job.
Keep making the efforts.
Yep. There you go.
That's all we can do.
We do, but, okay, great. Thank you. Let's move on to item 6.2, discussions slash motion, formal approval of Pickleball Plaza, Phase Three Change Order. Tom.
Okay.
Oh, man, wait.
No, no, wait. I think we've talked about this at our last meeting. So.
We did.
Hopefully, nothing more has changed and we're ready to roll.
Trying to pull up just the details on the, the, the change order. I'm struggling getting it to open. Let me just start out this way. Uh, Jake, Jake is out of town. So, I'm covering for him. So, you've got the, uh, the B team tonight. Martin, can you, yeah, thank you. Um. Uh, yeah. Yep, two. Yep, there you go. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Martin.
Mouse? Hey, Martin, do you wanna grab this, your mouse there and you'll have it? Okay, here we go. Um, to, to, to start off with, um, do you have any questions on the breakdown of the change order and what we're anticipating from that? I believe that I included just a brief, I may not have included a message in this. The encumbrances that they talked about on there are the things that the city is buying.
Yeah, go through, I tried to add those numbers together and subtract them all out. And I couldn't, I had a hard time making things add up there. So.
So, the 290,000, uh, 521 are the things that we're buying for the parks specifically.
Okay.
So, that's the, the bathroom benches.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, the playground, the, the, the equipment. Um, some of those things are encumbrances that we're, that we're currently already buying for that process.
Okay. Okay.
The, the change order, so Chris, Chris Wilkinson is actually doing our, our sprinkler system over there. It's, we, he's, he's very appropriate in his pricing and he knows the system that he puts in, and knows that'll work overall with our system. We have the change order of a hundred eighty, uh, seven six forty, which will get, you know, that, that pathway done, the rock work that needs to be done, um, planting the, the trees and doing those things that, um, that, that need to be done by them. And, and so, yeah, those are the details on that and so that balance amount of the seven fourteen, six twenty seven gets that done with still a, a little bit available for other things that we need to buy for that park. So there is some capacity in there, but right now you're approving the, that, that change order amount.
Okay, okay, that makes more sense, okay.
Does, does that help at all?
Yeah, yeah, it all didn't, wasn't, wasn't adding up to me or somewhere. Put them all together, but, okay, that makes sense. Makes sense, okay. Great, so, so what, do you need, you need to approve all those numbers?
Yes, we're requesting approval of the, the change order for the Romer Cart, Romer Park, Phase Three Change Order, as, has been presented in the packet.
Okay, great, any questions for Tom on those specific numbers?
Let me, let me circle back around.
Sure.
The numbers that we got were very similar to the numbers that were presented in the original bid that were very, very competitive. There was some change of scope and how it was, was anticipated to be done in the change order, but there was enough, so it was very valid numbers that we were receiving. Some of it was a little more difficult, but it was not exaggerated on the pricing on the backend, so it remained fair, fair, fair all the way through. So as far as our evaluation of it, we feel like it was a, a, an appropriate change order, there were no yachts included in this presentation.
Oh.
No yachts, sorry.
Just a little rowboat.
Still just a Zodiac.
Still one of those little pump up rubber rafts.
That's right, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, any questions, Tom, on that?
It looks good down there, they drove through there today and.
Yeah, they're working.
Rock works are in, some of the pathways are laid out, getting the big boulders tomorrow, is that right?
We were, we, we, we learned that there were MSHA, not to say too much, but they're gonna be at the mine tomorrow. We're not loading those rocks, we'll wait till Thursday, so anyways. It, yeah, they just, with, with them needing to be available for MSHA and everything tomorrow, they, we decided to push it for a day. So yes, Thursday, big rocks on Thursday, hope you guys enjoy.
What's MSHA?
It's like OSHA, only with an exaggeration, uh, what is the one with the line and the dot underneath it?
Exclamation.
Exclamation three.
Ooh.
OSHA X three.
Ooh.
So they're, they're, they're the mining inspectors.
Ooh, I see.
And so we didn't, we didn't wanna be up there causing a ruckus while they're having their OSHA.
Yeah, you don't wanna be anywhere around that.
Let them take care of their business.
Let them just deal with that.
We can wait for some rocks.
Yeah, for a couple days.
Yeah.
Wow.
But we, we went back up, we did a couple field trips to go up and mark the rocks. We went up today, meaning we, Carlos and myself and the contractor went up, relocated, make sure that we got the, the specific rocks we want, we're not just taking any big rock. We want them to be configured for safety and for size.
Rock shopping.
We went rock shopping.
Cool.
Absolutely, and.
That's a nice boulder.
Like identif- that's a nice rock.
Something my wife says when we go to Zales every time, she says, I have one of those rocks. Sure, huh?
They're not shiny clear rocks, right, that, you can make a ring out of.
Yeah, you can put them right there. Actually, the price of those rocks, you could.
Yeah, that's right.
Enough pressure and enough carbon and, yeah.
Six thousand karat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, back to.
So it's good, good.
Let's get back on track here, we're going, we're trying to, we're trying to get done by seven o'clock here, so it'll be better. Keep going, okay, no further questions, entertain a motion to approve the request.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change order for the Phase Three Ramp Pickleball Phase Project.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you very much, let's move on. Oh, council communication with staff, great, let's go on there, item number eight, Jill, we'll start with you.
I'm tonight.
Nothing, Zee? You're good? Cheryl?
Mentioned, I talked with Tom a little bit earlier, concerns about the construction that's been going on on fifty three fifty and I talked with him about the fact that there were very large open pits that were left when the construction had dug down to get to the piping and things there and with it being the holiday weekend, they were left open and the only thing that was blocking them was the yellow caution tape on some sticks and one of them didn't even have that. Then we had the great wonderful rainstorm that came through, it filled up those holes, so we had like many swimming pools out there. And I did have one resident that told me that, that they were, that some of the workers were out there bailing out those, some of the holes, but one of them, when I was on a walk through there, still had water in it. And I mentioned to Tom the concern of, of danger again, of it is a residential area, young children could be in that area. Those open pits were a concern and what possibly could be done or needs to be aware. I hope parents are aware, keeping kids away from them. And he was going to, later on he was gonna tell us a little bit of, an update on it, but I appreciated Tom listening to me and that we're taking a look at, making sure we're keeping those areas, construction areas safe as well.
Yeah, and that's a very valid concern and we'll be circling back around with the contractor to improve that. That, that is a, yeah, that's a high risk and we do not want anyone, young or old, falling in, in those holes, especially with water in them, so we'll circle around with the contract on that.
Thank you very much, that's it.
All right, thank you, Jeff?
No, I just wanted, nothing specific, just a couple of comments. Great to see dirt being moved around over on the project on Adams Avenue, definitely the library.
Fifty eight?
Fifty five eighty.
Fifty five eighty?
Yep.
Oh really, I didn't notice that, oh wow.
Grubbing today. That project started.
Oh, good.
But I do have a question about the other commercial property on fifty, five thousand?
Okay.
Where they were going to put the storage.
Oh, yeah.
Any, anything on that?
Just.
Still just.
Nothing again.
Radio silent.
Radio silence.
Just nothing.
Just, we're on the dark side of the moon right now.
Thought we had a little blurb a couple of months ago, I thought we heard a little voice.
We, we did and then it just vanished.
Okay, wow.
So, we.
Okay.
Hope, so.
Just keep the weeds down, we're fine, I guess.
Yeah, people have been using it as a dump with their trash, their stuff, so.
Yeah, it's becoming, yeah, it's gonna be a problem.
Do we just call them and they come pick it up, I guess?
You know, I'll find out from Martin how that's gonna be managed.
I really haven't seen too much junk in there, but.
There's not a ton over there, but there's, there's some limbs and stuff and.
Okay.
Noticed over on Washington, they just got done cleaning it all up and one of the houses took their limbs and threw them over the fence and now they're over on Washington Boulevard side.
Oh.
Maybe they'd like us to clean them up, I don't know.
Oh, they're gonna go, maybe they'll go back and pick those up tomorrow.
Oh, yes, I'm sure they are.
Don't worry about it, okay. Mike, anything?
Uh, yeah, I had some citizens reach out to me asking me how can they get access to the back of Roosevelt? Some of them are older, they wanna walk that track instead of going all the way behind Washington Paris, but all the gates are locked at Roosevelt, so.
At Roosevelt? Or?
From five thousand.
Yeah, from five thousand and on the other side too.
Yeah, there's a couple of gates there.
Yeah, they're all locked and some of those older citizens would like.
Is it gated on the other side?
On the other side too, so I went and checked it out and they're locked and so they would like to walk that track, but I think they get access to it.
I think they do that.
Whose track is that?
Well, it's the school district.
The school district.
It's school district.
I think they do that off hours just to keep, keep the property secure. I think when they first start building that, they said they would have a fenced in and it would be locked after school hours, so. They have a community center there for us to use, but maybe they don't want us to use the track, that little track.
Were you talking, oh, 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 I know what you're talking about.
Back in the playground area, I guess.
Yeah, where they have the playgrounds in the back.
I just don't, maybe they just don't want, I don't know. We check with the school district, I think that was one of those things where they wanna keep the school secure during off hours.
Oh. Yeah, I have no idea on that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, school district, our property, not our property, but they may wanna call us.
It was their tax dollars that built it.
Oh, yeah. Just mine, felt like, yeah. We may have to have them call the district and just ask them.
I told them, Mike, bring it up here.
Okay, yeah, that's kinda out of our jurisdiction, but, okay, anything else, Mike?
Yeah, I went to a league meeting last week, it was on beer tax and I was wondering if the city is taking advantage of any of those funds.
Great question and I've got a great answer, yes. We actually do take advantage of those funds and we have them go directly to the sheriff's office. They manage those funds and then we get the reduction for those funds on our contract, uh, cause they're the ones that do the enforcement, the work to, uh, secure and to maintain the security of those funds. So yeah, great question, we, we do take advantage of that, that's all I've got.
Okay, all right, I've got just a couple, a couple of quick things, garbage day, it's not garbage day tomorrow, it'll be delayed a day for, for the holiday, so. Put out your cans tonight, they're not gonna get picked up till Thursday day, so don't forget that if you get any calls. And then I was, I drove down through Romer today too and Chris had just mowed the lawn down there and that lawn is greener than I've ever seen it, it's gorgeous and the whole hillside is even like filled in, it's just absolutely gorgeous.
That park is looking good.
And I thought, this week starts baseball, we'll have hundreds of families down there and you know what the kids love to do? They like to bring their cardboard and slide down those hills, those grassy hills. We have signs up there that say no sledding and no ice blocking or no, you know, I think we, I think Chris would rather them not cardboard slide down there.
Yeah, they should not be doing that and in fact, we did a, a little Facebook announcement on that a while ago.
I, I thought of it today and maybe it's too late, but I thought of it today, maybe Carlos could get some yard signs and.
Yeah, highly visible.
And because they have, and throw them right in the areas where they go down and have like ten or twenty of them and stick them in the ground all up at the top there so people can see them.
Yeah.
And then, you know.
It's not a secret, has it?
No, put them right up at the top where they start and say, hey, look at the sign, look at the sign, look at the sign, cause it gets, it, it, you know, I was really surprised, those hills look like no kid has slid on that for years. I couldn't believe how much it's grown back, but it won't take long, it won't take many Saturdays before.
Can you say these are, a lot of the baseball kids' families?
Well, it's fam- yeah, yeah, it's families that just.
So can we talk to people who work with the baseball stuff and make announcements?
Yeah, we could have the coaches, you know, just say, hey, you know, don't have your kids, yeah, don't have your kids go up there and, you know, do that, but I just wonder.
That park's gonna be used a lot in a few months.
Well, then they just start running and sliding down there on their butts and on their, in their jeans and their shorts, it's like, oh, grass stained cities, I don't know, what do you, what do you do?
Well, we, we certainly discourage them from cardboarding on them, ice blocking, those things, cause they mess up the grass and then that becomes a, an area that we have problems with and we put a lot of effort into having that hill look good, be, you know, avoid, you know, if you do it long enough, you'll have a trench.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just.
Like I say, I was just amazed on how good it looks and it won't take very long before it, you know, it's looking bad even, I don't, I don't know what to do. I would make some yard signs.
We want them to have fun, we want them to enjoy it.
Yeah, within, you know, before Saturday and.
Do we know who to reach out with the baseball people about?
Yeah, that'd be Jason, so.
Maybe just make the request that they pass the word.
Please don't slide down on, there was a couple of times I've actually driven by there and seen, you know, you get the little snow, the plastic snow things just slide down and, and they go down there pretty good too, you know, straight down that grass, man, it's pretty steep.
It's a no fun zone there.
It's a no, I know, it's like, it looks so fun, but I don't know.
Why can't we just mess the place up, have fun?
But I know Chris, if he ever drove down there on a Saturday, he'd be, he'd be grabbing kids by the neck.
Right.
But, so, I don't know.
Yeah.
We can get some signs made.
Let me see if, if we can get some, I don't know how quick he could get some.
And I don't know how pricey that would be, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just, we've got the signs, but there's like one sign here and, you know, another two hundred feet, there's another sign and so. Right here, I'm not gonna slide, right here, I'm not gonna slide, it's kinda like a no parking sign, well, I'm not gonna park here, I'm not gonna park here, but right here, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna park and I'm gonna slide.
They go in the gate, that's how they get up the top, you know? At least at the gates, let's, I'll talk it over with Carlos, see what he thinks.
Well, mainly that, mainly the side, the north, northwest side, the fenced off, you know, where it's just open.
I think one thing that would help is if we add a little color to those signs, cause they're just like a little light sign with, not very visible.
Yeah.
I was out in North Ogden just a few days ago, last week and up, kinda in the fire zone, I know some people that live up there and I noticed some signs that were blue in color, so they kinda stood out.
Yeah.
So I walked over to one, I looked at it and it was talking about, you know, if you're walking your dog, you put on a leash, clean up after all that.
Oh, yeah.
But it caught my attention to the point that I read the sign.
Yeah.
And maybe that's something we can consider long term.
Okay.
Cause the signs are there, they don't have to be made big billboards, but if they were.
That's what I'm saying, little yard signs, I got some campaign signs I'll donate.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna use them this year and so do you, I don't, you know, whatever, but, you know, I don't know.
So we might look at that.
Okay.
Roger that.
All right, but boy, did it look nice down there, it really looked nice and they were, they were working on the, on the expansion.
Could always have Martin come down, he's a compliance guy.
Yeah.
Grab those kids.
No.
Yeah. Little Martin, okay, all right, Tom, administration reports.
Okay, you know what, I, honestly, I don't have a, a lot to add, we're gonna follow up with the contractor on the, the water project and appreciate your, your attention during our work session on the active transportation plan, that's another step forward to being a healthy Utah city.
Yeah.
And so we'll keep, keep moving along there and apply for that application this next spring.
Yeah, we might get, we might get an award.
Wow, that's awesome.
Major award.
Let's do it.
Just, just a little, little fun, little nudge, at Utah League of Cities and Towns, they reached out to us and apparently one of the mayors in the, in the grand scheme of things has a little bit of experience running efficient meetings, so they've actually asked Mayor Allen to help present at the League of Cities and Towns on how to run an efficient meeting and to have it timely and appropriate and, and be able to train a little bit about how to do that.
Next month.
So Mayor Allen's gonna be presenting at Utah League of Cities and Towns this year, so.
It'll be fun. And I have some great examples to share with all my great council members over the years, how everybody, you know, pays attention and follows the rules and we have some fun too, so, it's not that hard to do.
It's gonna be weird with that many people, cause you don't really have experience with that.
That's true. What do you mean, goes online, there's fifty people out here watching.
It's pretty easy when nobody shows up.
Thousands, yeah, as we said, there's thousands waiting online and waiting room, standing room only here. As I say, just prepare for that.
Yeah.
There's gonna be people and you're like, yeah, I might just mess it all up.
You might.
Thanks, Zee. Try to help. You got the fresher on.
Any, any knocking on wood, any salt over the shoulder, anything.
Oh, okay. Before the, before the, Jeff? Yeah. Oh.
Just one comment and really this is directed to you, Tom, thanks for your weekend review and your updates. It does help to keep us informed of what's going on.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you, and those do end up kinda taking what, not that I'm trying to be deceptive, I just, the information's been presented.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, yeah, thank you, you're welcome. Um, I don't, I, I try to give just enough information to educate, if you got any follow up, you know, certainly reach out and I'll. When I get a question, just so that you're aware, I get a question and I'll generally, if not. When I get a question, just so that you're aware, I get a question and I'll generally, if not always, unless it's just for a specific individual, I'll share it with the, with the whole council so that if one of you is asking, the rest can, can have some understanding. So I will, hey, council member so-and-so reached out with a question and then I send it back out to all of you. So that, so that they.
Keep it up.
Everybody gets to share.
That's good, that's good. Alright, you good, Tom?
Oh, you know what? I, I do, real quick. Um, we're, we've, we met with the, uh, the Red Cross. They are meeting with, uh, and I, I may have told you this in the weekend review, I know I did. Um, but with it being emergency preparedness month of September, um, just to bring it to the front. Their, uh, Red Cross and, uh, United Methodist are gonna be meeting on an evac center for, as one of our primary evacuation areas. Their board, um, this, yeah, this is a good time to mention this. Their board approved, um, the use of their building for primary evacuation. It is a really good facility for that. They've got kitchens, shi- private showers. They've got a lot of rooms that people can, could use or that even the gymnasium. So they, they're a very willing partner in what we're trying to do with emergency management. Red Cross is gonna be linking with them to do the evaluation of that building. Also, um, we're working with, uh, the, the predominant faith-based organization with, with the LDS Church. With, there's, there's two stakes that the overall, uh, organizations of the congregations run north and south in our, in our city. And so we're working with stake leadership, um, in that to help organize the LDS community also. And so we've got some meetings with them individually to help promote, um, uh, emergency preparedness and self, self-preparedness. Again, just a reminder, October second is the Emergency Preparedness Open House we'll be having at the fire station. Um, that's coming together really nicely. Red Cross will be there. They'll be working with us on, on, uh, both, uh, announcing and helping people understand that they can get with the Red Cross for free smoke alarms to be put in their homes, especially for those who don't have them. Um, but they're working with us on that. And one of the big focus on our emergency preparedness there is mindset. And people having the, the, the mindset that says, if I've got a situation, I'll be ready internally to be able to manage it so that I don't become a victim simply because I haven't thought through an emergency scenario in my own family, in our own environment. Because as all of you, as a reminder, we only have six public works guys, th- three firefighters on duty and some staff up there in City Hall and mayor and council. And we're gonna be working with all of you on, on some, some training and some to help raise the understanding of how the mayor and council can be helpful to staff during an emergency. And so a lot of that becomes that, that mental health component to being ready for a challenge. So that's gonna be kind of up on the front of our conversation. So I've got three minutes, so that's wrapped for me.
Nice, great, beautiful. Get those, uh, organizations involved, that's good. Let's go to upcoming events, September sixteenth, city council meeting, six P M. No work session yet?
I think we might have one with Martin.
Oh, okay. Okay, if it's Martin, yeah, we can do a work session with Martin. That's good.
You'll, you'll do one for Martin?
Maybe. You'll put it on there. Put it on there. September twenty-fifth, planning commission meeting? Still tentative, don't, don't put that in ink yet. October first and second, League of Cities and Towns. And then on that Thursday, uh, following the last day of the league, uh, we'll have the open house, as Tom mentioned, from six to eight at the fire station. October seventh, uh, uh, city council meeting at six, maybe a work session. October twenty-first, city council meeting at six, maybe work session. And then October thirtieth, tentative planning commission meeting. Covered all, Amy? Thank you, great. Uh, we entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and go right into our redevelopment agency meeting for a few minutes.
Motion to adjourn into our redevelopment agency meeting.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adjourn this meeting and go into our redevelopment agency meeting. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are now in our redevelopment agency meeting. This Tuesday, September second. Uh, we welcome you all here with us tonight. We'll start with a roll call, please. Amy?
Chair Allen?
Here.
Board member Christian?
Here.
Board member Sisam?
Here.
Board member Parkinson?
Here.
Chair West?
Here.
Board member Tom?
Here. Okay, thank you, Amy. Thank you all for, uh, participating tonight. Uh, just welcome everybody on board with us tonight. Appreciate that. Consent items, approval of tonight's agenda and approval of meeting minutes from August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Agenda, we're okay on that, staff? Okay, any, uh, changes, corrections, those minutes? Saying none, uh, we'll approve those items by general consent. Thank you very much. Item number four, new business, four point one motion, approval of allocation of tax investment funds from the South Point Reinvestment Project area for repayment of Golden West Credit Union incentives. Tom?
Okay, this, um, you, you may have noticed in the staff report, I don't know if you had time to read the staff report that I sent out today. It was a kind of a consolidated summary of the memo. Essentially, um, uh, in, in June, you approved the allocation of funds of seven hundred. I, I don't have my other computer here, so forgive me. Thank you. For seven hundred and forty-three thousand that would be allocated to repay or to, um, reinvest those, um, those funds into the southeast project area. After further reda- uh, analysis and looking at the agreements as drafted, we determined with, with the council from, uh, our, our legal council specifically, our R D A attorney, um, that it would be appropriate to actually capture all of the one point two that we had invested in the Golden West Credit Union to pay back the southeast project area. So in essence, we took to, to, to slow this down, just so that is a kind of a reminder, if there's any, kind of any question. We had funds that were available in the southeast project area. We used those funds to go into the South Point Project area to, and help incentivize the construction of Golden West Credit Union in the South Point Project area. That was paid to Golden West Credit Union with the understanding that if building number two did not come online, those funds could be, those, the funds that we'd be coming in in future increment over the next fifteen, sixteen years. Those funds, as they came in, could, could, they would be received into the South Point Project area and then transferred to the southeast project area to, um, forgive you, I don't have my other computer here, so I've gotta get the right word.
Reimburse? A reimbursement?
Reimburse the southeast project area. Reimburse is an important word, so thank you. So that is to reimburse the southeast. That will take time. That doesn't come in one lump sum. It is the increment that is, that was agreed upon by all of the taxing entities that would either stay in the South Point Project area for building number two or reimburse the southeast project area. You're authorizing at this time the use of the one point two or allocating it budgetarily or to give direction to finance to capture those funds when they come into the South Point to then come into the southeast and be allocated for future investment in southeast. So it's over time, it will, and the reason this is important now is because it, we just received the first allocation or the first increment, the first tax increment after the, 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 um, the, this is the first tax year that we've received funding for that. So we need to have somewhere to put it. We actually didn't receive those funds until F Y twenty twenty-six. So they're, they actually showed up now. So we need direction from the R D A board, or the R D A board, to say, yes, staff, use that for, um, for that, for that reimbursement. So what you will be doing tonight is to rescind, and this is important, to rescind the previous motion made on six, three, twenty-five and authorize the use of tax increment funds from the South Point Reinvestment Project area for repayment of Golden West Credit Union, um, incentives of one point two million, um, as, as this, basically as described above. So you're auth- you're rescinding and authorizing the, um. Grant Graham? What was the word I used in the staff report?
Reimbursement?
Reimbursement. Reimbursement is the word that we wanna use. I had a, a clarification with that. There's so many repayment words, but reinvestment. So rescind, reinvest the one point two into the southeast project area.
Reimburse. Has all the words. I guess I'm gonna just read.
What's that?
Is it reimbursed or reinvested?
Just read it, it has all the words.
Yeah, okay. So that summary recommendation would be the motion. Something you're saying, Jill?
That's what I'm saying. Just read it.
Easy, yeah, just read that. Okay, does everybody kind of understand? Our D As are really pretty complicated, but they're really not, I don't know, but.
Yeah, they, they are and they're not, right?
But we just, you build a big building on a piece of land and you're gonna make a lot more taxes.
That's right.
You know, you're gonna collect a lot more taxes than just dirt with a trailer parked on it.
Right.
So that's what we're, that's what we're starting to get. We're starting to get that large sum of property tax.
That's right.
Every year.
And, and that property tax right now, we'll go back to pay back the one point two that you authorized for the incentive for that program to go to.
Right.
And let's say, let's say later on, if something comes up and they're like, hey, we're gonna do building number two and it hasn't expired. They could go in, a, a future board could go in and renegotiate something going forward and, 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 and make some things happen with another C R A.
Right.
Um, and, and so, so there's options going forward, but for right now.
Okay.
The, the, the option is to allow the payback.
Okay.
Reimbursement to southeast project area.
Okay.
And rescind, importantly, rescind, rescind the six, three, twenty-five. Rescind six, three, twenty-five?
Yep, okay. We're just gonna read that paragraph.
I move to rescind the previous motion made on six, three, twenty-five and authorize the use of tax increment funds from South Point Reinvestment Project area for the reimbursement of the Golden West Credit Union one point two million dollar incentives as described.
Perfect. Is that the motion you'd like, Tom? And Amy, is that the motion we want? Second.
And I'll second.
Good job, Carol.
Well, wait, second?
It's kind of, it's almost like C D G tonight.
Yeah.
It has to be just right.
Yeah, it has to be just right. Well, mate, is there a second?
Jeff's second.
Jeff's second? Okay, we have a motion of second. Is there any discussion on that, board members?
I appreciate that Tom took the time to go over this with me earlier today, so that it was clarified, because my question was, hadn't we just done that on that six, three, twenty-five for that different amount and how is this coming in and how it'll work? So I appreciate the clarification and where we got to.
You're welcome.
To this point.
Yeah, and, and the, the, honest, I hate to admit this in public, but my mistake, I apologize. But at least we're going the right direction. So, um, I, I kinda goofed up the, the, the first time, so thank you for your patience. And, and, and us being able to straighten this out.
Clean that up just like that, so, no problem. Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you all. We have a motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is unanimous, so we'll get that taken care of. Uh, seeing as there's nothing else on the agenda for the redevelopment agency meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn meeting?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.